This time I'll call to order the July 10, 2025, meeting of the Clearwater City Council. If you wish to address the council tonight, please complete the comment card. Comment cards are located by the clerk seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. This time we'll move to item two on the agenda. I'd like to call forward Pastor Bob Brubaker from the Christ Community Presbyterian Church, and then ask all to remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I just pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you for your blessings upon our city. Indeed, if we look back upon this past year, you've saved us from the storm and helped us to recover. We thank you for the leadership in our fair city, and thank you for this gathering of the council tonight, and they need wisdom. We pray that you would give them grace and wisdom in making decisions and looking out for our city. We thank you for this occasion and pray that you would have mercy. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go further in tonight's meeting, I'd like to introduce our dais. To my far left is our city clerk, Rose Marie Cole.
Good evening.
To her right is our city attorney, David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right is city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To his right and my left is council member Mike Menino.
Good evening.
To my right is council member David Allbritton.
Good evening.
To his right is vice mayor Lena Texcheda.
Good evening.
To her right is our city manager Jennifer Corrier.
Good evening.
And to her right is assistant city manager Dan Slaughter. And to his right is assistant city manager Al Bet.
Good evening.
If that will move to item 4.1 on the agenda. Parks and Recreation Proclamation. This time I'd like to call forward Art Cader, our Parks and Recreation Department Director. This is the best-looking Parks and Recreation team of the country tonight, maybe the world tonight. You all look great, so thanks for being here. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities across this nation, including the city of Clearwater, and provide important health, wellness, and quality of life benefits. And whereas our local parks and recreation areas are fundamental to our community's environmental well-being, they enhance property values, attract new residents, provide opportunities for individuals, families, and groups to engage in physical exercise, serve as a tool for community engagement, promote social cohesion, reduce crime rates, thus enhancing personal health and wellness, contribute to safety of our neighborhoods, and foster economic development. And whereas our parks play a crucial role in preserving natural resources and wildlife habitats, fostering an appreciation for the natural environment among community members, offering refuge from the stresses of daily life, and providing green spaces and recreational opportunities that area accessible to all, regardless of age, ability, or socio-economic status. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department plays a vital role in post-disaster activities, including clearing roadways for emergency vehicles and providing storm shelters, and whereas July has been designated as Parks and Recreation Month by the National Recreation and Park Association, and is celebrated across the country to recognize the contributions of dedicated professionals who maintain and program these spaces. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Parks and Recreation Month in Clearwater, and urge all citizens to take a break and recreate in one of the city's beautiful parks or participate in the many activities and programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you for the work you do all year long. Art, would you like to say a few words?
I would. I appreciate it. I'd like to first of all express my gratitude to you, Mayor, and to council for recognizing this month as Parks and Recreation Month. The proclamation demonstrates the significance, I think, of Parks and Recreation play and the lives of our citizens that we have here, and our awareness of the many wonderful parks and people that we have in the city of Clearwater. Clearwater has been my home since 1965, and I have had the privilege to basically serve the residents of Clearwater for 46 years of my 52 years in this profession. Clearwater has a long history of providing award-winning beaches, parks, special facilities, ballfields, recreation centers, and programs. It takes a lot of work and commitment by some very extraordinary individuals to make this happen. I have been blessed to work with some incredible talented people, some of which are with me tonight. Okay, it's not the whole team, but this is part of what I call my work family. And our work family's big, but it's part of our work family. They are the senior management of the Parks and Recreation Department, and these individuals represent 330 years in the profession of Parks and Recreation, with over 200 years working with the city of Clearwater. To my right, Mike Lockwood, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, with 25 years here out of his 30 years in the profession. Mike is responsible for all recreation programming, the recreation centers, special events, athletics, sports tourism, and all things Phillies, is his. To my left, Matt Anderson. He's Assistant Parks and Recreation Director with 21 years of experience and 15 with the city. He's responsible for all of our 110 parks, which means all of the beautification and the maintenance of all those parks. He is also responsible for beach maintenance, downtown maintenance. He's responsible for our administrative division, all of the capital projects, and everything that's emergency management for Parks and Recreation. So with that, Matt, I want you to introduce your staff.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us tonight. It's really a truly honor. I couldn't do what I do without the people surrounded by me. So I just want to give a little background. Everybody standing right here to my left is Ronald Chu. He's our Division Controller. He's been with the city for 12 years, and in the profession of accounting for 35 years. To the left of him is Paul Mack. He's been with the city for 25 years, and he's been in this industry for 28 total years. To his left is Alexis Wells. He's been with the city for 15 years. He just came back to us. He was with us, went to Osmar, and came back, but overall, he's been in the industry for 22 years. To his left is Mark Perry. He's been with the city for 19 years, 39 years total in the industry. And then Craig Wilson, who is not with us tonight, he's been with the city for going on two years, and he's been in the industry for 33 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Again, as Matt said, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity of being here tonight, but also doing the things that we love. So to my right is Chris Cook. Chris has been with the city for 12 years and been within the profession for another 25. I have Carla Scrivner. She manages our athletics and athletic field maintenance division. She's been with the city for seven years and 12 total in the profession. And Sandy Clayton, who is our senior manager over recreation programming. She's been in the profession like me for 25 years, but she outlasts me in total, and she's been in the profession for 33 years. So that's my team here. And I'd like to just bring up Sandy just for one more part of our presentation tonight.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation staff are historically not very good at calling attention to ourselves or what we do for our community. We're much more comfortable behind the scenes. Like a steady heartbeat, we mow grass, organize special events, clear trails, run tournaments, clean beaches, sweep gym floors, rake tennis courts, and then step back and let people play. Our reward comes from the smiles on the faces of the citizens and the visitors when they get the opportunity to enjoy our pristine beach, play on a safe playground, dance at a concert, or swim in a crystal-clear community pool. However, during the month of July, we are stepping out of the background, and we're shining a spotlight on our department. We have set up heartboards, like this one you see here, at each of our recreation centers, where the community can share what they love about their Parks and Recreation Department. It's only July 10, and our boards are full. Each day of this month, a different park is being highlighted on social media. We're talking about what the park is and where it is and why it's special. Fun events have been planned throughout the month to help us celebrate the connection we have with our community. We would like to thank the council, city leadership, and the community for their continued support of our department, which allows us to be an essential reason Clearwater is bright and beautiful. We are Clearwater Parks and Recreation, CPR. We're the heartbeat of the community. Now, we want to play a short video for you and provide you some goodie bags afterwards. So if I can do this right.
Where do you go when you seek the peace of a natural setting? When you want to exercise, reduce stress and anxiety? Where do children go when they want to play, swim, laugh, and make friends? Where do seniors go to socialize, learn new skills, or improve physical strength? Where does a community go to celebrate, relax, or compete? In Clearwater, we go to our beautiful parks and recreation facilities. We go to play pickleball, to watch a picture-perfect sunset on a white sugar sand beach, to volunteer for our community, to be part of a team, to see a bald eagle up close, or to simply spend time with friends and family. With 109 parks, 27 playgrounds, 51 athletic facilities, over 12 miles of trails, hundreds of community events, programs, and classes, and an award-winning beach, Clearwater offers citizens and visitors thousands of opportunities each day to uplift their physical and mental well-being. During Parks and Recreation Month and year-round, we recognize the importance of the programs, places, and people that make up our Parks and Recreation Department. Clearwater Parks and Recreation, the heartbeat of our community.
We thank you all. We'd like to give you a little goodie bag of what we're passing out to actually the rest of the residents when we see them. We're giving it to our parks workers who, when they're in the field and they see somebody having fun or just enjoyed it, so we'd like to give just that little token to each one of you.
Thank you. And thank you all for what you all do for the community. I love this video, because it's not just our community, it's this council. We all appreciate what you all do to make our city better. And I hear about it, and I'm sure the other council members do, throughout the community, people complimenting the great work that our Parks and Recreation Department does for our city. So thank you and congratulations on the proclamation.
I appreciate it. Can I get the proclamation?
Yes.
You know, I come here, we get to shake hands and everything else, and we're still ahead.
Thank you so much. Watch your step. Thank you. Very proud of what you do. Thank you. Very proud of what you do. Great job. Thank you so much. Yeah, watch out. Watch your step.
Great presentation.
Congratulations. Thanks so much.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Great job. Very proud of what you do.
Okay, we'll now move to item 4.2 on the agenda, the 727 Day Proclamation. This time I'd like to call forward Kylie Diaz, Community Development Vice President of Visit St. Pete Clearwater. Whereas Clearwater welcomes millions of visitors annually with tourism serving as the largest economic driver locally and overall in Pinellas County, supporting more than 100,000 jobs throughout the county, creating more than $11 billion in economic impact and contributing more than $6.5 billion in direct spending each year. And whereas local residents are the heart of the city of Clearwater, making significant contributions and creating a unique and welcoming destination for visitors around the world. And whereas this special collaboration between, excuse me, Visit St. Pete Clearwater and the local hospitality and tourism industry serves to thank residents for the warm hospitality they share with visitors year-round. And whereas Visit St. Pete Clearwater generates opportunities to educate residents about the value of tourism and the integral role that tourism plays in fueling our economy while highlighting the incredible impact that comes from visitors with love. And whereas July 27th shall serve as 727 Day and an opportunity to celebrate our incredible destination, home of the best area code of them all, 727, showing appreciation to residents for their positive impact on local tourism through locals-only specials and celebrations in the city of Clearwater and around Pinellas County. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim July 27, 2025, to be 727 Day in Clearwater. We encourage everyone to take this day to acknowledge and appreciate the essential role they played in making the city of Clearwater and Pinellas County a premier tourist destination. Thank you for coming today, and what an exciting event. I love this event, because it really celebrates our local residents for the important role they play in tourism throughout the year by celebrating, you know, where we live. And so Kylie, thanks for coming tonight. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rector. I would like to, well, Visit St. Pete Clearwater and the Tourist Development Council would like to thank the Clearwater City Council and Mayor Rector for recognizing this important day, but most importantly, we would like to recognize all of the residents and the businesses of the city of Clearwater for being the most gracious host and welcoming our visitors 365 days a year to America's beautiful beaches. Such a welcoming community, and we're so grateful for recognizing this day. We'd also like to point out that tourist development tax dollars are able to help finance wonderful city projects all around the city of Clearwater. So we have the Clearwater Municipal Marina, the EDC Moore Complex, Clearwater Marine Aquarium, and it's with these tourist development tax dollars that we're able to give back to the community. So we're so happy that we can do this on 727 Day. And please join us on 727 Day as we go to the Clearwater Threshers game and we throw out the first pitch, and we will be giving out 727 free shirts that have been designed by artist Chad Mize to the first 727 people. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Watch your step.
Next, we'll move to item 5.1 on the agenda.
Approve the minutes of the June 18, 2025, City Council meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion moved. So moved.
Second.
What is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We now move to item six on our agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda?
Council, I've received a request to remove items 6.2 and 6.17.
6.2 and what?
6.17.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without, except for items 6.2 and 6.17?
So moved. Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We'll now move to item 6.2 on the agenda.
Approve your work order with Chen Morton Associates, anchor Fort Lauderdale, Florida, for North Beach Stormwater Pump Stations Design, Permitting, and Bidding Support in the amounts of $1,291,598 pursuant to request for qualifications, 50-24 North Beach Stormwater and Title Flooding Improvements, and authorize the appropriate officials executing.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Marcus Williamson, Public Works Director. I won't rehash all of the items in it, but this is so that we can start getting after a bunch of the stormwater improvements we want to pursue. We did get some of the good news, again, that we did get the $3 million grant. We're pursuing a couple more grant opportunities, so we're excited to get this going and help the residents with some relief. So standing by if there's any questions.
Does anyone here from the public tonight desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.2?
I'm Mr. Haluba. It is true. North Clearwater Beach has long faced chronic flooding and adverse tidal influences. Now the city's going to spend, you know, another $1.3 million on consultants. Well, I've got a, you know, a little North Beach update. North Beach is in the process of returning to nature and rejoining the Gulf of America. I don't believe any amount of interconnecting pipes or pumps is going to solve this. The consultants and obviously the city council appear to ignore Isaac Newton's Laws of Gravity. If a landmass area is at sea level, there's no place for the water to go naturally. Water seeks its own level. But nobody needs to rely on a 17th-century theory to prove this. Just got to recall, you know, the recent somewhat bungled, expensive, and failed attempts to keep North Beach above water. And I believe the EPA restricts pumping water back into the Gulf of America, so where's this water going to go? Mr. Allbritton's swimming pool? I don't believe North Beach can be saved from Mother Nature. Stormwater is not a utility. It's not a utility as defined as a useful or beneficial item with an opt-in or opt-out. Stormwater, because it's not a utility, has no place as a line item on our Clearwater utility bills. If stormwater is so useful, where's the benefit to North Beach, you know, becoming submerged? North Beach will continue to return to nature, no matter how many drains and pipes are placed there. It's a lost cause and perhaps a waste of money. Nice mustache, Cotton.
Does anyone else here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.2? Okay, if not, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 6.17.
Mayor, this is my item. So this is a settlement being brought forward by the city attorney's office. I know we discussed it through one-on-one, so all I'll say tonight is that, for the record, this is a pretty minor, low-speed accident. Unfortunately, there are unique legal principles involving rear-end collisions as well as surgery cases, and so the settlement that's being brought forward is not really a reflection of our evaluation of the facts of the case, other than the legal principles that apply to them. But we do believe it's appropriate based on those unique legal principles. That's all.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.17?
I'm Mr. Haluba. Again, we're reminded of the overall shoddy performance of the Clearwater Police Department. Now, I don't know Mr. Ricky Williams, but I believe, given the apparent severity of the accident, despite what Mr. Margolis says, the police department got off pretty easy. Clearwater Police, rather than being a protector of the community, is in fact an ever-present danger to the community. Now likewise, I don't know Hannah Ray, but I believe Clearwater Police will pay her a settlement also for their wrongdoing. Officer Scott Yates committed several improper actions with Ms. Ray, and actually, he should be terminated. But while we're at it, let's just terminate the whole thing. Let's terminate- Let's terminate Gandy, terminate Wallach, and especially the evil and unethical Daniel Slaughter, shut down Clearwater Police, and contact, contract law enforcement with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office.
Does anyone else here desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.17? Hearing saying none, is there any council discussion? No council discussion, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Agenda Item 6.17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 7.1.
Approve a purchase order to Station Square Condominium Association, Inc. of Clearwater, Florida for 2025 condo association owners fees in a cumulative not succeed amount of $113,419.56 pursuant to Clearwater Code of Orders, Section 2.563, Part N1, Part D, non-competitive purchases, and authorize the appropriate officials executing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeremy Als House, Director of Public Works. The item that's before you is our obligation for, an agreement we entered into a long time ago with Station Square in order for it to be built. We agreed to own the bottom 100 parking spaces in the garage. We run it as public parking. And as an owner, we're obligated to pay then our share of the yearly budget for Station Square. This year, that's $113,419.56. I'm here to answer any questions.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.1? Hearing saying none, is there any council discussion?
Just a reminder that I will be recusing myself as I'm a property owner of Station Square.
All those in favor signify the, oh, excuse me.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That would be four votes for and Councilmember Texheda abstaining. Agenda Item 7.2.
Approve the five-year update of the Pinellas County 2025 Local Mitigation Strategy, which has a purpose to reduce death, injuries, and property losses caused by natural manmade hazards and adopt Resolution 2508.
Evening, again, Mayor and Councilmembers. Marcus Williamson, Public Works Director. I believe Sarah gave a pretty good overview of this on Monday, so I won't rehash it. But we are excited to get it in, as there's a number of grants that we are trying to pursue. So, standing by if there's any questions.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.1? If there's not, is there any council discussion?
There is a resolution, Counsel.
Mayor, we have Resolution 25-08, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, adopting the 2025 Pinellas County Multi-Jurisdictional Local Mitigation Strategy as part of compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve this Agenda Item?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 7.2?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 7.3.
Adopt a tentative millage rate of 5.8850 mils for fiscal year 2025-26, and set public hearing dates on the budget for September 3, 2025, and September 17, 2025, to be held at 6:00 PM.
Mayor and Council, I am so pleased to present this balanced budget, proposed budget for the fiscal year 25-26. I know that we've had several conversations and our one-on-ones about this, and really excited to bring this budget forward today. This budget proposed is the same millage rate as the prior year. Earlier this year, we had two strategic planning sessions that helped shape the direction of this budget. Our focus remains on responsibly maintaining existing facilities and services where it makes sense to do so. Departments were asked to carefully evaluate their operations to identify opportunities for increased efficiencies and smarter resource allocations. As a result of this effort, the budget includes a reduction of 12.3 full-time equivalent positions. Looking ahead, there's still significant work to be done. Maintaining the current millage rate is essential for preserving our long-term fiscal stability. We continue to recover from last year's storms, and while we are actively seeking reimbursement wherever possible, there are some costs that are going to remain the city's responsibility. The construction of the new city hall is progressing on schedule. There's an anticipated move-in planned for next year, and renovations to the MSB are slated to begin this fall. Providing competitive wages is also going to be, continue to be, a top priority. New labor agreements have been reached with our public safety unions and for non-union positions. We are committed to maintaining our current pay plan to stay competitive in today's labor market. Negotiations with the Phillies are ongoing, and we expect to break ground soon on renovations to Osceola Avenue and North Port Harrison. I want to thank Kayleen and Jay Ravens and the Finance Department and Budget Staff for all their work on this, as well as all the department heads. They really took our budget exercise seriously, and that is a result of this outstanding budget presented tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to take you through a lot of the details of this proposed budget. The fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget for all city funds is $708,362,570. Our operating funds and special revenue funds are $573,459,630 of this total. And capital improvement funds are budgeted at $134,902,940. In total, this is a decrease of 10% from the 24-25 amended total city budget. This slide further breaks down that previous slide showing the totals by fund type. The general fund budget for fiscal year 26 reflects a 4% decrease in comparison to the current year's amended budget, and have a few more slides that we'll get into the details of the general fund budget later in this presentation. The utility funds total, which includes the budget for water and sewer, stormwater, gas, and solid waste and recycling operations, is increased by $986,092, which is less than 1% from the prior year. Across these departments, this includes funding for 476.8 FTEs, transfers of $50.5 million to fund capital maintenance projects, $25.7 million is for payment in lieu of taxes and all of our inter-fund charges, and the budget for, it also includes the budget for all other operating costs, which for these departments include expenses like commodity purchases for water, our utilities' costs, dump fees, and chemical purchases. The utility, the enterprise funds total, which includes the budget for the operations of the beach marina, the airpark, Clearwater Harbor Marina, and our parking operations, is budgeted at a 62% decrease over the amended fiscal year 25 budget. These costs support, I'm sorry, this budget supports 75.1 FTEs, transfers of $1 million to fund capital maintenance projects, $4 million for the payment in lieu of taxes and all of the inter-fund charges, and the budget for all of our other operating costs, which for these departments includes expenses such as fuel for resale, utilities, parking meter contracts, and merchant fees. And this large decrease is because of capital funding in the current year one-time projects that aren't funded next year. The internal service funds include the budget for information technology, utility customer service, building and maintenance, and fleet and radio communications. Also, the central insurance fund, which supports the operations of risk management, employee benefit programs, and the employee health center, as well as the budget for all city insurances. The budget for internal service funds are decreased by $213,930, which is less than 1% from the prior year. This total includes funding of $162.3 FTEs, transfers of $915,500 for capital maintenance projects. A total of $38.5 million is budgeted for insurance costs and claims. $6.9 million is budgeted for short-term debt for vehicle purchases and replacements, as well as technology hardware. The budget for all other operating costs for these departments includes technology, software, and support agreements, citywide fleet expenses for fuel, maintenance, and vehicle parts for the city's fleet, as well as all of our billing and maintenance contracts. Special revenue funds reflect a 36% decrease from prior year. And this is also due to the decreased plan and project funding for penny projects. These include, these funds include the special development, which is budget, special development fund, which is budgeted at $15.7 million. The special development fund accounts for restricted revenue sources that are allocated to capital projects, such as those from penny for Pinellas, road millage, and our fuel tax. The special program fund is used to account for both revenues and expenditures related to grants and special activities. This is budgeted at $1.8 million next year. And our other housing assistance funds are budgeted at $1.3 million next year. And the capital improvement funds reflect a 19% decrease from the fiscal year 25 amended budget. And I also have another slide later in the presentation that breaks down that total. This chart represents the change in taxable property values over the last 11 years. Our 2025 preliminary values received from the property appraiser reflect an increase in property values of approximately 4.7% from $18.5 billion in 2024 to $19.3 billion. The proposed millage rate of 5.8850 mils is recommended for the fiscal year 25-26 budget. This is the same rate as was levied in the current year. Due to the value growth, this proposed rate is 4.34% greater than the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage rate that would provide the city with the same property tax revenue as was received in the prior year. Using this proposed millage rate, property tax revenues are projected to be $109.1 million for fiscal year 26. This represents an increase of approximately 4.8 million or 5% over the current year. Of that 109 million total, approximately $103.9 million will support general fund operations, and $5.2 million represents the road millage set aside for the maintenance of city streets. Revenues that support general fund operations reflect a decrease of 4% in total in comparison to the current year amended revenues. This decrease is primarily related to eliminating the use of reserves, which is budgeted to fund capital projects in the current year. As discussed on the previous slide, ad valorem tax revenues are budgeted at approximately $103.9 million. This is a 5% increase over the current year and represents approximately 47% of total general fund revenues. Utility taxes account for 9% of total. They're budgeted a slight decrease from the prior year. The category of other taxes includes business tax receipts and communication service taxes, which represent 3% of total. Communication taxes are budgeted a 10% increase from prior year based on the current year's trends. Franchise fee revenues are somewhat volatile based on the consumption of electricity and gas. The budget for these are reduced by 5% based on revenue trends in the prior year and what we've seen in the current year. This is approximately 5% of total general fund revenues. Intergovernmental revenues include sales tax, state revenue sharing, fire and EMS reimbursements, and other local funding and reimbursements. The budget for these is estimated a slight increase over the current year. This total accounts for 15% of total general fund revenue. Charges for service represent approximately 9% of the total general fund. This includes fees at our rec centers, revenues received at the pier, as well as service charges between our operating funds. And we're anticipating a 3% increase in those revenues for next year. Transfer in revenues include the payment in lieu of taxes from our proprietary funds, also transfers from, for staff and admin costs from the CRA and special program funds. These revenues are anticipated, are approximately 6% of total, and they are expected to decrease by 6% in comparison to the current year. And the other revenue category, which accounts for 6% of total, includes building permit fees, fines, interest earnings, and other smaller revenues. This also, this revenue category also includes the ticket rebate and naming rights revenues that we receive at the sound. This category is expected to increase by 3%. General fund expenditures in total reflect a decrease of 4% across all operations in comparison to the current year amended budget. This proposed budget for next year includes annual wage adjustments in line with approved labor contracts, costs associated with insurance increases, debt service costs for imagine bonds, and capital funding for road maintenance projects and city facility improvements. Most departments show overall decreases, which is primarily due to the change in pension funding methods, which saved over $6 million in the general fund. In addition, departments were challenged to review operations for efficiency and budgetary savings, as the city manager briefly spoke to earlier. This helped reduce operating expenditures by over $480,000 next year. The library budget is decreased by 8%, which represents further cuts that included changes to operating hours both at the main library and the countryside branch library, which resulted in the elimination of 7.5 FTEs. The Public Works Department reflects a 13% decrease, and this is due to capital funding, one-time projects in the current year. This pie chart also represents general fund expenditures by department. The budget for public safety is approximately 44% of the total general fund budget, with the police department representing 27% of that, and fire and EMS operations 17%. The next largest cost is Parks and Recreation, which is 25% of the total general fund budget for next year. And the rest of these are pretty similar. The distributions are pretty similar to the prior year. This chart represents the total general fund by category. Personnel costs continue to be our largest expense at 59% of the total. This represents funding for 1,161.4 full-time equivalent positions that support general fund operations. Operating expenditures represent the next largest category at 15.5%. Inter-fund service charges at 10%. Transfers at 14%. This transfer total represents $15.2 million transferred to fund capital repair and replacement projects, $10.4 million for one-time major facility renovation or road construction projects, and $4.3 million is transferred to the CRA, which represents the city's contribution for the TIF collection. And that's for both CRAs. And debt and capital expenditures combined are about 1.5% of total. A total of 1,891.6 full-time equivalent positions are proposed across all funds for fiscal year 26. This is a decrease of 12.3 positions for next year. In this graph, the sand-colored portion represents general fund FTEs budgeted at 1,161.4 positions, which is a 12.3 FTE decrease from the current year. In comparison, the green portion represents all other funds. They're budgeted a total of 730.2 FTEs, the same as the current year. The reduction of 12.3 positions in the general fund represents the following changes. In the city attorney's office, a part-time staff assistant position is eliminated. In the city clerk's office, a vacant city clerk specialist position is eliminated. In the library, 7.5 FTEs are eliminated by the Saturday closure at Main and Sunday closure at Countryside. And weekday offers were, I'm sorry, weekday hours were adjusted. In total, we only lost four service hours at the library. Positions eliminated included an accounting technician, library business systems analyst, part-time security and parking aide, custodial worker, two librarian ones, a library assistant, and a library assistant, too. And the police department, a total of 3.3 FTEs were eliminated, which include a vacant police records specialist and five part-time police report reviewers, and that part-time total 2.3 FTEs. In addition, a police office specialist and a police service technician were eliminated from police department, and a staff assistant is eliminated from the fire department. These three FTEs are being held as a reserve of positions to be used for future organizational changes in the general fund. The total budget for capital improvement funds, as mentioned before, is $134.9 million for fiscal year 26. And this slide represents that breakdown by fund type. Funding of projects for our utilities to provide planned capital maintenance projects for stormwater, solid, water and sewer, solid waste and recycling and gas. For fiscal year, this total is $68.3 million, which is approximately 50.5% of total capital funding. General fund projects are budgeted at $40.6 million, which is about 30% of total funding. This includes projects for fire, police, streets, sidewalks, parks and recreation facilities, libraries, and the maintenance of all general city buildings. Projects in support of internal service operations are budgeted at $18.4 million or 13.5% of total. And this funds projects that support fleet, radio communications, general services, information technology, and utility customer service. And the largest, the largest portion of that $18.4 million is related to purchases for our city's fleet. And the capital budget for small enterprise funds is proposed at $7.6 million for fiscal year 26, and this is funding for capital repair and maintenance at the airpark, both marinas, and parking facilities. New projects for fiscal year 26, we have four new projects at Clearwater Airport, the airport. The Apron Construction Project is estimated in total of $400,000, funded by a grant from FDOT and reimbursements from Fly USA. The master plan and airport layout plan project is estimated at $200,000 in total, funded by a grant from FDOT and reimbursements from Fly USA. A new project is created for the renovation of aircraft hangars. This is estimated $1,315,500, funded by a grant from FDOT and airpark reserves. And the repainting and runway, of the runway and taxiway markings project is estimated at $40,000. This is also split funding with FDOT and the airpark revenues. We've added a new project for the replacement of the Clearwater Golf Course bridges, estimated at $2.7 million. This is budgeted utilizing short-term financing as a revenue source, while funding options are still being explored via contract negotiations with the operator. An alternate source might be needed for that in the future. And a significant change is proposed to the Pier 60 R&amp;R project. Funding of $5 million of general fund revenues is included next year to begin addressing major renovations needed due to the damage sustained in recent hurricanes. Council, as we talked about on Monday, the main action requested of you tonight is to set the tentative millage rate, which the city manager has proposed at 5.8850 mils, and to set the two public hearing dates for September. This information is provided to the county for inclusion and trim notices, which will be mailed to our residents in August. Just to note, if you set the millage rate at 5.885 and decide to change it, it can be reduced later, but cannot go higher without us mailing all of our residents, a first-class mailing at our expense. We've scheduled a special work session on Wednesday, August 6th at 10:00 a.m., set aside for you to further discuss the proposed budget, and all departments will be represented at that meeting. Both of our public hearings are scheduled as special meetings this year. The first is planned for Wednesday, September 3rd, and the second, which will be the final adoption of the budget, is planned for Wednesday, September 7th, and both meetings are scheduled to begin at 6:00 p.m. The full proposed budget is available on our website. A new new this year is a link to our digital budget book that can be easily navigated, as well as a full PDF version is posted. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, if I may, just real quick, to go back to the the website, the interactive budget tool that we have is absolutely fantastic. You can click on any one of those projects and get a detailed information about the funding source and where it all came from. So I do encourage council, as well as the public, to please, prior to the the special work session on August 6th, that you look, go through that interactive process. It's it's new, and it is absolutely incredible. I know that the team makes this budget process look easy. It's not. It was a lot of work that went into this, and the teams really took the direction from the council very seriously in trying to incorporate our strategic plan with the the actions and the philosophies that this council wanted to adopt. And I hope that that's reflected, and you feel heard and listened to by this team with a budget that keeps the same millage rate, has reduced our operating, and again, does not have any general fund reserves using projects or to fund projects this year. I mean, it is truly an incredible budget. I could not be more proud of this team and grateful for the work that the team did. Thank you.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to this agenda? Not? Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Vice Mayor was first.
First, I want to really thank City Manager Poirier for doing a great job highlighting the important takeaways from that budget, because it's not just numbers. It's I like the way you described it in a big view, point of view. I want to thank all the staff. I do feel heard. I think we all would agree with that. And I want to thank everyone that was involved in this final product, because it was great work. Thank you very much.
Council discussion? Councilmember Paulbury?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. Kayleen, you do a great job. And, you know, everybody, all staff did a job. They listened to us about scaling back and did a great job on doing that. And I know it's tough, every department. And so that's why we came up with a budget that was less than last year. And I know it's tough to do, especially after the hurricanes and all the expenses we had this year. We did a great year. I just want to say thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. It's going to be a broken record, but thank you very much. I can't stress that enough to the team and all the directors and everybody. I mean, you guys do a great job. You're phenomenal employees. And, you know, to work with us and see where our vision is in the future of where the city's going, trying to be fiscally responsible and do what's right with the taxpayer money. We really appreciate each and every one of you guys. We know it's not a fun task. We know it's a stressful task. But I do appreciate it. So thank you, each and every one of you.
Mr. Manino?
Thank you, Mayor. All very well said, so I'll just try to add to it a little. Very appreciative. The discussions and the exercises were extremely challenging, and we recognize that as this council. We also want to recognize that we're sensitive. When you discuss reduction of FTEs, it might just be a number on a spreadsheet. But we acknowledge that those are livelihoods. And and we greatly appreciate the service that those individuals gave to the city. We know those were difficult discussions and conversations to have. And we do appreciate this budget that you put put before us and the listening that went into it. So thank you.
And I'll, you know, agree with everything that's been said. I do want to 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 thank, and we have a former council member here tonight, the prior councils with the city who have taken our reserves very seriously and protected those reserves. We spent at one point, I think, $85 million on hurricane recovery. And believe it or not, you may have heard on the news, we don't send Washington or Tallahassee a check, an invoice, and get reimbursed for that right away. It takes a long time to get reimbursed for that. So it was very challenging, and I appreciate city manager and the staff and your team digging into it, because we pushed you all to look for savings everywhere. And it was a very hard year to do that, because we spent a lot of money on hurricane recovery and needed to. But we were able to do that because prior councils, not just the previous council, but for years have always taken those reserves very seriously and make sure that, because we are a coastal community and we're in harm's way, we're protected and the taxpayers are protected if we have an event where we need to dig into those reserves in an emergency. So I want to thank them, and also want to thank, as the others have, just our team for looking for savings in a very difficult year to look for those savings, to keep this tax rate at least the same, because it's very important to our citizens who are, as we've said before, are going through a difficult time, too, with their costs rising, to to keep this tax rate even. So with that, if there's no more council discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 7.3.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Closed unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 7.4.
Upper for local government contribution of $610,000 in general fund reserve as a funding commitment required for Blue Fort Harrison LLC to receive a basis boost under the state of Florida's low-income housing tax credit program for an 82-unit affordable housing development project at 1219 Fort Harrison and authorize appropriate officials to execute documents necessary to reflect closing.
Good evening. Dylan May. I'm the acting housing manager. On Monday, I presented the outcome of the city's recent notice of funding availability in support of a proposed affordable housing development called Blue Fort Harrison. They requested that council, I'm sorry, I requested that council approve a local government contribution of 610,000 as a funding commitment required for Blue Fort Harrison LLC to apply for the for a basis boost under the state of Florida's low-income housing tax credit program. The developer is here, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.4? If you have a comment card, too.
Are you Stacy?
I'm Stacy Bannock.
Okay, so before you speak, Jordan, could you raise your hand? Okay, that's one. Charlie? And then Hans? All right, so you have seven minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hey, good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Stacy Bannock. I represent the other project, Bellevue Manor. My company address is 558 West New England, Winter Park Avenue, 32789. I'll try to make this as quick as I can with the delayed time here. In 2019, we built Madison Point Apartments, which is an 80-unit affordable housing development in downtown Clearwater. It was built on time, under budget, and is very successful affordable housing development in Clearwater. We would like to build another great affordable development in Clearwater called Bellevue Manor. I would like to thank our longtime residents of Madison Point for their support. You'll hear them here tonight. The Bellevue Manor property is located in an area designated by the city as the Lakeview Neighborhood Revitalization Area. It's an area designated by the city as, quote, "in need of redevelopment of underutilized properties." For the city of Clearwater's 2020-24, excuse me, consolidated plan, the Lake Bellevue area was designated a low and moderate income area. Our proposed development rents at 60% AMI and less are the right fit for Lake Bellevue. I'd like to continue speaking about all the benefits of Bellevue Manor, but I'm here today to briefly discuss the process, which brought us here tonight, and to ask that Bellevue Manor be considered for the $610,000 local government support. Before I go into it, I'd like to thank Dylan and his staff. You know, I know Dylan's wearing a lot of different hats right now with the shortage of of staff there was for to bring this affordable housing RFA. However, you know, there were a couple of issues that I want to bring up. There was a technical review committee meeting on June 23rd, where committees scored the applications using four scoring criteria to pick a winning applicant. However, there was nothing in the advertisement which explained what the applicants were supposed to submit. There was no scoring criteria identified. There was no list of required documents to submit. Applicants were just required to submit whatever they thought was the correct information. Here's an example with the problem with this. There was a section called "The Financial Feasibility of the Project." A portion of the scores notes Bellevue Manor, which was our project, lost points because we didn't submit an operating expenses summary or an LOI from the lender. Although we submitted a detailed pro forma with a total development hard costs, soft costs, financial costs, including sources and uses, and annual rent roll with utility allowances. Had there been a list of what the city wanted it submitted or what they were scoring, we would have, we would have had every single document as we did the year before. Now, the RFA did have a bunch of disclosures in it, and the city reserves, one of the disclosures said, "The city reserves the right to ensure fair and equal treatment for all applicants regarding opportunities for discussions and proposal revisions, which may occur after the submission and before the final award." If the city is relying solely on the current TRC scoring for these projects, we would like to request that the city pull the sign from the city council agenda tonight, and the city rescore the applications based on the information we provided. The due date for the applications to Florida Housing Finance Corporation were pushed back all the way to November 19. So there's plenty of time. There's no rush for this. So if anybody has any, you know, issues or any questions after this, and you're not really sure, like I said, there's plenty of time. I don't see why we can't put this off to the next month. So so I would like to review some of the important considerations for Bellevue Manor. I heard during the workshop, a couple of discussions, and one of them came up with the permit-ready scoring goal, which is also known as people know it as shovel-ready. It is expected that there will be two other applications competing for the Pinellas County Award at Florida Housing this year, Pinellas County itself and St. Pete. Those are the typical. Every now and again, there'll be a third one or fourth one. If Clearwater doesn't support an application that will be permit-ready this year, the city will not be supporting a competitive application. This is a requirement now, and it's part of the large county scoring at Florida Housing. It'll be a sorting criteria. This means that any application that is not permit-ready will go to the back of the line. This is a fact. So why roll the dice with $610,000 of city money and a chance to build affordable housing in Clearwater? Bellevue Manor has already started the city's flexible standard site plan development process, and we commit to the city. If we, if we're able to go forward with the $610,000 for Bellevue Manor, we will go immediately into permitting and get our our permit-ready letter with the city of Clearwater to submit to Florida Housing. It's a substantial cost. It's anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. We're willing to go ahead and take that chance with our money and put it into this project, so we can move forward. So there's a clock here, 2 minutes, 15 seconds. Okay, as I mentioned above, there were some other issues with the process of the scoring of this RFA. Another issue with the TRC scoring under project compliance with Apple regulations, city code, and live local, et cetera. That was, that was, they want to make sure the projects are able to move forward with city code. Blue Fort Harrison only scored 2.5 points lower than Bellevue out of 25 possible points. And Blue Fort Harrison has not submitted anything relevant to their project, which demonstrates the city has reviewed any compliance with city regulations. Here's some comparisons between Bellevue and Blue Fort Harrison. Blue Fort Harrison is required to get a flexible standard site plan approval and has not done anything yet. Bellevue is almost done with this approval process. Blue Fort Harrison did not provide any detailed building information, no detailed floor plans, no unit plans, no real elevations, renderings, et cetera. Bellevue did. Blue Fort Harrison provided a zoning letter from a year ago from Gina Clayton that's for a mixed-use project. They're not doing a mixed-use project. They're doing affordable housing, propose the same as we are. Therefore, they have not completed a single thing regarding their zoning review. But somehow, they they came in at a total points of less than 2.5, less than we did on a total of 25. So I just, you know, again, the scoring just doesn't make sense. There also seems to be a misconception here, which impacts the scoring, that Blue Sky and Bay Care are partnering to build Blue Fort Harrison. The LOI that Blue Fort Harrison submitted with Bay Care Medical is for a completely different project. Their LOIs for 105 units of workforce housing. They're proposing 78 affordable housing and four units at 120% AMI. The LOI states that this partnership is to allow for parking between Blue Fort Harrison in exchange for housing for employees. Blue Fort Harrison's application was amended this year, and they will not be using parking from Bay Care Medical. The average income from Morton Plant Hospital is $78,000 a year. You can look it up. That's what it is. $38 an hour. That's the average. The 80% annual income AMI for Pinellas County is $58,400 for single income. Basically, the average Morton Plant employee makes way too much money to live in affordable housing, and that's what they're proposing. They're not proposing workforce housing. They're proposing affordable housing, same as we are. So I have some other things I could discuss, but I think I got the main points across with the minutes I was allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else here desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.4? I'm seeing none. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, Dylan, maybe you can work with me, because I can understand the frustrations if there's, you know, truth and validity to the scoring process and not knowing what paperwork you need to know and like what specific documents the city's looking for to get that exact score. So is there any way that you can speak to that?
Sure. So last year, one of the issues that we ran into was that the application was very specific, and the proposed projects that were selected did not submit, I think it was an appraisal. And so, you know, working with with legal, working with the county, you know, utilizing their their assistance, I, that's, this is how we put it together. It was very, we left it open to interpretation, so you could submit whatever application you have. The fact that the the selected project or the 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 project that wasn't selected didn't have a operating proposal, did not restrict it from being considered. It's just that the other project that did have it was scored higher, because we can determine feasibility easier with that.
To follow up on that, if they contacted you or your staff, whoever they're working directly with, would they have been able to ask if that would have assisted them or you all in getting a potentially better score? Or if that is pertinent documentation that might set them apart?
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe I spoke with both developers during the the process.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, I think the thing that that I took away from this presentation here was the workforce houses, housing versus low-income housing. And I I heard that Morton Plant put a letter in that, you know, supported the this other, this project, the blue project, and but it doesn't make any sense to me if it's all affordable housing and not workforce housing, how that could be beneficial for Morton Plant. Do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I think if you take an average of a hospital, that could be a little misconstru- I mean, you know, you have, you've got very highly paid professionals that can skew that number, that average. So, you know, janitorial staff, that that type of staff is likely going to fall in that range, where they would, they would be able to, at a minimum, apply for the workforce housing, if not the the 80%.
Okay.
Councilmember Manino?
I know I asked on, on, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, and also, it is a letter of intent. It's not a binding agreement by any means. But the idea of a developer working with Morton Plant is, you know, positive.
Thank you. And you addressed my question on Monday, but just to, for more clarity. Do you agree with the statement that not being shovel-ready is a disqualifier for an application?
No, actually, after you had asked me that, I had checked, and that has not been established, that that's going to be a disqualifier, or that it's going to adjust the the scoring of of those applications at the state level.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to address something you said, Councilmember Albrecht. You made a very good point. When you're looking at a hospital system, there's a huge gap between the professionals that are hired and then the support staff, and the support staff is, I think, are the the staff that would benefit greatly from this opportunity. And they tend to travel far, because they won't be able to afford housing in Clearwater.
I get that. Thanks.
A better way to look at would be to use median income for the hospital. That'll give you a better idea of where that actual middle ground is.
Okay, got it.
Anybody else? I I just want to say that we need both projects, honestly. I mean, we, we, everyone knows we have, you call it affordable workforce, wherever you want to call it. We have a housing crisis across the country, but worse here in Tampa Bay, and definitely worse in Clearwater, where proximity to saltwater just makes it really, really that much harder for us to find, you know, housing for essential workers, not just hospital workers, firefighters, and first responders, and all- not just hospital workers, firefighters, and first responders, and all kinds of folks who our city desperately needs to support our economy, but to support, you know, the folks who live here, and to care for the folks who live here. So, really, both projects would be great. So, even though we're choosing one tonight for this particular funding and project, I would love to see us find a way, maybe a different program to do both, because we need, we really do need both. And to have two really good proposals at the same time is encouraging, because we need more than just two, we need lots of them, but it's, I want to say that, that we're having to choose between two very good proposals. And if there's a way to help the one that doesn't get this particular program opportunity tonight, then I hope there's an open door to talk about other ways we can make the project that doesn't get chosen tonight successful, because we need them both.
It was a challenge, you know, I mean, as you can see from the scores from the TRC, it was a very close call on that, so, I agree.
Okay. With that, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 7.4?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes.
Hello?
No.
Can you hear me now? Voice from above. Just a few comments on what you just experienced. A, I think you're spot-on, I think all of you are like, can we support both of them? You could. This is a very competitive process, I would akin, I would liken it to a lottery, because there are projects from all around the state competing for a finite pool of low-income housing tax credits, and it's not uncommon for municipalities to support more than one. So in this instance, it would mean that you'd have to up your allocation to a $1.2 million commitment with the opportunity to probably only fund one project, if it got selected. So it's not as if you're going to fund both of them. If you did, great, you'd have two affordable housing projects, but that is typically not what happens in this particular type of process. The other thing that I would say is, the process that you have right now is not uncommon, and I've seen it happen in Jacksonville, as well as in Broward County, in which multiple applications are considered, and they fund them all, in terms of making a commitment to fund all of the projects, understanding that the lottery process only allows for one or several of them to get selected. So, let's say they make a commitment to fund 30 projects, and that might be an obligation of, I don't know, $5 million bucks, but literally only one or two projects may get selected. So, it's not common, uncommon, that you're dealing with something like this, and that at the end of the day, you may only get one of these projects that gets tax credit allocation. However, every community wants all projects to get funded, however, the lottery process just does not allow that to be possible. So, just want to bring some context to you, and I'm sure you've had this discussion, but I wanted to bring it up just for the purposes of this discussion.
Thank you.
We voted on this agenda.
I just like to get our record.
You're free to fill the public record after the meeting, but we're conducting a meeting, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item. 7.5?
Declare a surplus certain real property located 1321 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, 1317 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, and 1106 Tangerine Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, for the purpose of entering into a lease, property operation and grant agreement between the Community Redevelopment Agency, the City of Clearwater, and the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition, and approve said lease, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Hello, Eric Santiago, CRA Division Manager. During the City Council work session on Monday, July 7th, the Community Redevelopment Agency brought forward the declaration of surplus property within the North Greenwood Community Redevelopment area, and the lease property operation and grant agreement between the city, the CRA, and the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition. There have been no changes to this agreement since the work session. Here tonight are representatives from the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition. I am here to answer any questions that you may have about this agreement.
So anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.5? If not, is there any council discussion? No discussion, is there a motion?
Approval of Agenda Item 7.5?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda Item 7.6?
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1408 Seabreeze Street, together with the abutting right-of-way of Seabreeze Street and past ordinances 9828-25, 9829-25, and 9830-25 on first reading.
Good evening, Lauren Matske, Planning and Development. This is the first of several requests for voluntary annexation in order to receive solid waste and recycling and sanitary sewer services from the city. This property is located at 1408 Seabreeze Avenue and is occupied by a detached dwelling. The Development Review Committee reviewed the application and is recommending that .09 acres of right-of-way adjacent to the parcel also be annexed. The petition is consistent with Clearwater 2045, which is the city's comprehensive plan and the Community Development Code, and the DRC is recommending approval.
Reading?
Mayor, we'll start with ordinance number 9828-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, together with all the abutting unincorporated right-of-way of 1408 Seabreeze Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, ordinance number 9829-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential low, RL, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9830-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
So anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.6? If not, is there any council discussion? No discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 7.6?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda Item 7.7?
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1115 Ridge Avenue, together with a certain Ridge Avenue right-of-way and past ordinances 9831-25, 9832-25, and 9833-25 on first reading.
All right, good evening, Lauren Matske again. This is the second voluntary annexation, and as stated, it's for 1115 Ridge Avenue, and is occupied by a detached dwelling. The applicant would also like solid waste and recycling services, as well as sanitary sewer services. The Development Review Committee reviewed the application and is recommending that .2 acres of right-of-way adjacent to and just to the north of the property also be annexed at this time. The petition is consistent with Clearwater 2045 and the city's Community Development Code, and the DRC is recommending approval.
Any other reading?
Mayor, first up, we have ordinance number 9831-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, together with certain Ridge Avenue right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up is ordinance number 9832-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential low, RL, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9833-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
So anyone here from the public desires to speak to Agenda Item 7.7? If there's none, is there any council discussion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 7.7?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda Item 7.8?
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of institutional, and initial zoning atlas designation of institutional district for 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, together with certain rights-of-way of Union Street, Soul Road, and County Road 193, and past ordinances 9807-25, 9808-25, and 9809-25 on first reading.
Right, last one. This request is for voluntary annexation for three parcels, which are owned by Sylvan Abbey Memorial Park. This is actually one of the largest annexations I've processed, so, including the cemetery on the north side of Sunset Point Road, and two vacant parcels on the south side of Sunset Point along County Road 193. The total acreage is 69.95 acres, and the DRC is recommending 2.6 acres of the listed rights-of-way also be annexed at this time. This one is also for solid waste and sewer service, but also reclaimed water service for the cemetery itself. The petition's consistent with all of the plans as stated in the agenda item, and DRC is recommending approval.
Now, we have a reading.
Mayor, first up, we have ordinance number 9807-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between US Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, together with certain rights-of-way of Union Street, Soul Road, County Road 193, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, we have ordinance number 9808-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between US Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as institutional, I, and drainage feature overlay, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9809-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between US Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as institutional, I, providing an effective date.
So anyone here from the public desires to speak to Agenda Item 7.8?
Now, I'm supposed to fill this out, so I don't know who to give this to.
Yeah, please, sir, clerk, thank you.
My name's John Herbert, I'm the president of Chelsea Woods HOA, which is across the street from the Sylvan Abbey Cemetery on Union Street. Excuse me, I'm super nervous, never spoke in front of any kind of government thing before. I'm just curious, what is the annexation for? Are there proposed building down the road, that kind of stuff that's going to affect traffic and stuff coming into our neighborhood, which is up Soul? We're on the corner of Soul and Union. The map that was up there, we were at the very top of the map. That's all, I want to report back to our homeowners, the reason for this and what's going on, that type of thing. I'm not against it, but for it, just asking questions.
Thank you. We'll ask our staff to explain here in a minute, but do you have any other comments?
No, that was it, I was just wondering what was going on, why it was being annexed, that type of thing, so.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
We'll have the staff elaborate.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak to this agenda item? If not, we'll have council discussion. Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, maybe Ms. Matske can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the reason for annexation was for sewer sanitation, and most importantly, the reclaimed water service. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it was primarily for the reclaimed water aspect of it. They're actually also signed an agreement to annex for another parcel that they own that's ineligible for annexation at this time strictly, so they could get the reclaimed water. There's a great benefit also to our public utilities for that purpose. They did not indicate any plans for the two small parcels on the south side of Sunset Point, but the primary reason was definitely for the reclaimed water, and to continue operating the cemetery as is.
Thank you. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, Ms. Matske, before you go off. So just another question, I understand his concern, and usually, building plans and things come later, and you have a chance to come up and talk about it then, but what is the use on this property? We know what the use is here?
I'm not sure what the use is for the two smaller properties. The main parcel is, of course, the cemetery itself, the cemetery proper that was never part of the city.
Is that institu-, what is a cemetery, institutional?
Institutional, yes, that's why, it would be zoned institutional, and, because that's the only district where cemeteries are permitted.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 7.8?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Move to Agenda Item 7.9?
Designate Councilmember Manino to serve as the city's official voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 14 through 16, 2025, in Orlando. Councilmembers, at the work session, there was consensus to appoint Councilmember Manino, but Councilmember Cotton will explain the rest.
Perfect, thank you. I went and looked further in my schedule after getting the itinerary for the conference, and I will be able to take it, so I know Mr. Manino has stepped up a lot for the team here, in taking other designations and other posts, so with my schedule allowing it, I would be more than happy to go and represent our city at that for the Florida League of Cities Conference.
I don't know. Any objection?
Nope.
That's good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I have, I have no objection, actually. I'm supposed to be a grandfather that very weekend, so it actually worked out perfectly.
Congratulations.
Mr. Cotton did so. Before I booked a hotel or anything in Orlando and got in trouble, I appreciate the city clerk telling me to slow down on Expedia.
So, I do need a motion to amend it.
Make a motion to amend it to myself, Councilmember Cotton, to serve as the official voting delegate for Florida League of Cities Annual Conference.
Second.
Is there anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.9?
I'm Mr. Haluba, and Mr. Cotton, I want to thank you for doing that, because I am no fan of Mr. Manino. I don't think Mr. Manino would have been a good choice for this, or any appointed position. I think Mr. Manino is a bit of an egomaniac and craves attention. But the fact that he ran a charity which was shut down for non-compliance should be on everybody's mind. According to him, hundreds of thousands of dollars were collected.
Mr. Haluba, the motion is to appoint Mr. Cotton.
Yeah, and I'm saying why, that that's a good idea.
Well, then, I'd ask you to speak in favor of Mr. Cotton, because that's the motion.
Mr. Cotton is a whole lot more suited for this than Mr. Manino, because Mr. Manino cannot or will not disclose the beneficiaries of this phony charity that he operated. He won't even comply with Open Records Acts that I filed, because- He won't even comply with Open Records Acts that I filed, because there's nothing to comply. He doesn't comply with anything. So I'm very, very happy that he is not going to be the official voting delegate, and I'm happy that you are, Mr. Cotton, even though you're in disguise. The only thing that should be, you know, solicited from Mr. Menino is his resignation.
Is anyone else here tonight desire to speak to Agenda Item 7.9?
Good evening, council. I'd just like to briefly thank Councilmember Cotton for being an appointed representative to the Florida League of Cities. The designation of the ballots is not the biggest benefit of going to the Florida League of Cities Conference. It's a great opportunity to understand the good things and the bad things about other cities, and to therefore be a better servant to the citizens of Clearwater. And so, thank you, Councilmember Cotton, and I'd encourage the other members to be as involved as possible with the Florida League of Cities. I know many of you are able to do that to certain degrees, and thank you for your efforts in that manner. Thank you.
Is anyone else here from the public who desires to speak to Agenda Item 7.9? If not, is there any further council discussion? And we have a motion, second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Move to Agenda Item 8, City Manager Reports.
Mayor, just one thing. I just wanted to, again, recognize the team. Fourth of July is one of our signature events, and it takes nearly every department to work together to pull that off. And while we certainly had some weather challenges associated with the Fourth of July, our team once again did a really great job in showcasing our city and showing the 10,000-plus people that we had attend what Clearwater's all about. So just wanted to thank the team. That's all I have.
City Attorney Reports.
Nothing right now, Mayor.
Move to Item 10.1, then. Councilmember Menino?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for allowing us to have this discussion, which on the surface is about a process associated with proclamations, but I think it presents us as a council a deeper opportunity as a team to meet the rising demands of governmental efficiency, accountability, and service quality that we provide to our citizens. The city of Clearwater currently does not have a formal proclamation process in place, while cities of Tampa, St. Petersburg, Largo, Safety Harbor, Denedin, and both Pinellas County and Hillsborough County all have formal processes established. In fact, if you were to visit any of the websites just mentioned of the municipalities or counties, they all provide resources and direction via their websites to fulfill that service. In Clearwater, myclearwater.com, the search bar does not help you, and in fact, you will stump Sunny, our chatbot, if you type proclamations or process associated with. I know staff sometimes enjoys that, trying to stump Sunny on our website. That does make us better, and Sunny was stumped with this one. Recent peer review studies do suggest that formalized governmental processes have the ability to lead to productivity, efficiency, reduced errors and inconsistencies, improved collaboration and communications, enhanced processes of our evaluation, reduces costs, enhances customer service and satisfaction, and improves compliance and risk management. Additionally, modernizing and standardizing our process that's currently missing aligns with Clearwater's strategic plan in the areas of superior public service, community well-being, and high-performance governments. My friends, we can often respectfully disagree on some things on the dais, which is healthy. What we do all share is the value for the importance of operating as a government as efficiently as possible, as effectively as possible in a cost-effective manner, and to meet the rising demands of accountability and transparency in the governmental process. Please understand that the document that everybody up here has been provided is solely to assist us with the discussion. It is not proposed definitive language that I hope you all jump up and support. It's more taking the discussion that we had on Monday and suggestions of notification, how we move forward. Some wanted to sign a proclamation and be part of the process, kind of put it all together in a sequential order so that we can see and understand how it moves. Again, if we do nothing else but establish a formal process online through our website and through our administrative teams that assist the citizens with that process, then I think it is a win, and wherever we go from there is up to this dais. With that, Mayor, with all due respect, if you wanted to go through this in any method or manner, you're welcome to lead this discussion, and we'll go from there, or I can go through it, whatever you would prefer.
Yeah. I'd just like to start. First, I don't have any issue with formalizing our process. As I stated at the work session on Monday, we've kind of done that informally, because when I started as mayor, really, there was no structure to it at all, to your point. So I don't have any problem with formalizing our process or making it more clear and writing to citizens, because we were already working to do that. What I do have a problem with the perceived sense of urgency that this is some emergency we've got to solve by raising the issue at a work session on Monday, and then being handed a document five minutes before a council meeting, and being asked to review or talk about it up here tonight, without a chance for me to sit down separately and look at it, having done proclamations, as mayors have throughout the history of our council and city for years, with my own experience with them. I just don't see the sense of urgency why tonight. And I did look back to see, you know, to see what happened. So I watched the tape on May 15th to see the proclamation that apparently gave rise to this one, and no one at that meeting had a problem with the proclamation. Everyone in the dais stood up to congratulate the six different people that came in from different walks of faith, not all from the same church. And then there were comments made at the end of the meeting about hoping everyone, you know, celebrates with the month as it was designated. And then earlier, I looked back to see, just to make sure that I was recalling correct, and sure enough, a year ago, there was a council member who, in a work session, asked about the process of proclamations. I've got a group here in town that would like to have proclamations, and we talked about that up here, and they, that group, got their information to me, and we did a proclamation. So I would, this is not something that, you know, just came up here in the last month or so. And so what I would like to do, again, I'm not against us formalizing it, but I don't think it's, I don't think we should, we don't necessarily have to jump on this tonight. So I appreciate the work you've obviously done to pull something together, to formalize it. I would just like to have more time to take this, come back, and before we discuss it again, review what you're proposing, and to be able to share better what my own personal experience has been this past year in issuing these, to see if maybe there are some things that I don't think need to be addressed in this, or maybe there are some things that you haven't put in here that I think we should address. But literally, we've just gotten this right before the meeting started tonight, and I've got a chance to look at it. I don't know if the other council members had a draft before, but I didn't. So I would just like to have some time to think about it before we discuss it further. Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Menino, thank you for putting this document together. You know, while you were speaking, I did go through it briefly, and it's really well-formulated. I don't disagree that, you know, other council members, the mayor, give them time to go over it, make tweaks as necessary. However, I do want to say thank you, because it seems like you heard what the discussion was, and you took that back and incorporated it, because what I'm seeing here is that we are still keeping the process with the mayor as the figurehead of the city to keep that as the respectful area of it. But then you've even noticed that we would just like notification prior to Thursday, and if there are any edits, it can go back to the mayor's office and for the administrative team to look at. And then, you know, you put in here that if some council members do have a problem with something that's there, it would take three to essentially veto that or go back to the administrative student office to see if there's an issue for review. So I don't have a problem with allowing everybody else to really eat this in, make edits where they see noted, but thank you for, you know, from Monday to Thursday, being able to formulate a very well-thought-out document and taking what each of us had to say, and still, you know, respecting the office of the mayor that's here and acknowledging everybody else's opinions and wants and needs. So thank you very much for that.
And along those lines, you know, I've never intended to hide these proclamations. They come in, so we get a lot, I get a lot of them. We've tried to screen those, but certainly I've tried to be transparent, and we've not tried to keep, you know, any proposed proclamation away from anybody. So to the extent that I am completely fine with giving everyone a heads-up on what's coming through, so that you have time to read them yourself and decide before we get to a meeting whether or not you've got an issue or not. So on that, I don't have any problem at all in communicating clearly what we're intending to do, but I'd just like more time to review specifically what you put in here. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Councilman Cotton said. You did do an amazing job for, like, three days, put this thing together. Just off the top, Monday, when we were talking about it at work session, I wasn't really on board with being part of the process of looking at every proclamation. I think, and I still do, to the biggest, to the most extent, think it's the mayor's job to do that. And, you know, proclamation is left to the mayor, but I do like what you've put together. I think I would like to discuss some of these things, starting with maybe work session, final review, and that kind of stuff, but I think all of us need more time to look at this, and maybe at the next work session, we can bring it out and have a good discussion on it, and then make whatever edits we make to it, make it then, and then vote on it on the next council meeting. So I suggest that that's what we do.
Yeah, definitely. We do need a formal standardized process that's transparent, that's easily accessible to the public. I think that's something that we all agree with. Quickly reading this, thank you so much. A lot of hard work, a lot of good ideas, but I understand the need to have more time to ponder and digest, maybe, you know, either add or have opinions on some of this that's written here, but even reading it now real quick, there's a couple of things that you've added that I didn't even consider, and I think it warrants more time to think about. So more than willing to postpone it and do it at a work session. You want to get up here? Is that what you're trying to do?
My AI thing answered a question I did ask.
Anyway, to recap, yes, let's take the time to digest it, but definitely, thank you so much for your hard work. Certainly a lot to think about, a lot of good suggestions in here.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. This was in no way, shape, or form a direction to scrutinize any past decisions. It's solely in recognition as a government, and we're missing a formalized process, a process that is used commonly in every single other surrounding municipality and county. We believe in Clearwater, rightfully so, that we perform at the highest levels of government, and we take pride in that. To say that we're behind any of the other cities throughout our entire counties means that we have room to be better, and that's all this was, as far as time-sensitive, but I do not, I would not argue that at all. There is no pressure of time. There is no rush to get this done today. We have to have difficult, challenging discussions. We had one on Monday, Mayor, with all due respect, and the direction that I was given from this dais was to put a proposal together of a discussion and a guideline. I sat with both city manager's office and the city attorney to make sure we were, A, staying legal, and B, weren't overburdening the city manager's office or your staff. So there was a lot of considerations that went into this. If this is a direction that we do move as a city, this has, does not have my name on it and doesn't need it. This is a document that we're solidifying as a team and as a group and making Clearwater better for the citizens. So it was set before you, because I didn't hear back on what the process of distributing it was, wanted to make sure everyone received it and touched it and could read it at the very same time. So you didn't get it any later than anyone else, and in fact, staff printed it for me at the very same time, and I put my hands on it exactly when you did. So I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the discussion, and whenever this council's comfortable in having that discussion moving forward at a work sessions, look forward to moving forward and seeing how we make Clearwater better and stronger for the citizens.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move to Item 11, closing comments by council members. Councilmember Cotton?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd again like to thank, I know I did it on Monday, but here formally, Congresswoman Luna, Governor DeSantis, Senator Hooper, Senators DeSigly, and Representative Burfield, for their hard work and all the appropriations that they've either gotten for us and/or requested for us in the future, for our infrastructure and everything that's going on here, especially to our local state and the federal congresswoman, who have already procured money for us for the infrastructure needs on North Beach specifically, and all the other appropriations that were given to us. So again, thank you to all of those wonderful representatives that we have to work on behalf of the city of Clearwater, but also like to say, or echo what the city manager already pointed out earlier, the staff for Fourth of July, you guys did another amazing job. Thank you very much. I know it's got to be tremendously stressful, a lot of hard work. The storm came in, you guys did a great job of getting those fireworks off just before, but then my heart goes out to you, because as I entered the parking garage, the rain went out. So I know all of that work had to be taken up and put back away, and it was you guys that made that happen for the 10,000-plus people that showed up to one of the only municipality fireworks shows that didn't get canceled. So thank you so much for the diligence in that, and I know that I'm very appreciative of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Menino?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Obrady?
I just wanted to take a minute to ask if we could, for new business, if we could talk about, and it's a good time to do it, because we're talking about council rules. I sent everybody what St. Pete does for their, they call it open forum there, and I talked a little bit about this to Mr. Margolis earlier. I just want to make a time or on a work session, we can discuss this and see if we can move forward with something that works for Clearwater, and I think it'll be a good discussion. So we'll see about putting it on a work session coming up, maybe in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council, before the vice mayor begins, do you want it for the next work session, or should I just wait until you're ready for the discussion? I just, I want a timeframe as to when to put it on the agenda.
Well, are we going to be talking about, I don't want to load it up too much on a work session if we're talking, let's, let me get back with you on that as to when, that would be a good one. If we're, I don't want to get too many things loaded on a work session. I'd like to take one at a time issues, so I'll get with you on that. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. I hope everyone had a safe and wonderful Fourth of July. The Clearwater Celebrates America event was truly wonderful. I attended with some family and friends. It was wonderful to see over 10,000 people in attendance. Very grateful. Very grateful that we moved up the fireworks. That really reflects on the staff because the minute those fireworks were over, the rain just came down. So kudos to the staff. And I know it has been said, but it's deserved to be said again. On Tuesday, June 24, the Billheimer Capitol Theater finally, finally, had their unveiling of their marquee. I know it took a minute, but it was worth it. It looks great. We can now see from across the street what's coming up. Right, David? God, how long have we been waiting for that? Clearwater was named by a car subscription service to be the most photogenic commute and described as even the shortest drives feel like a mini coastal getaway. Good stuff to share. Clearwater also came in at the top in Instagram hashtags, over 343,000. According to the 2025 PalStar, they named Bay Care Sound Number Three nationwide and Number Four worldwide based on ticket sales. Bay Care Sound also was a finalist for the Amphitheater of the Year by the International Entertainment Buyers Association. And I look forward to celebrating more.
Thank you. Move to Item 12, closing comments by mayor. Just to echo, some other things have been said. Fourth of July, just how the entire team worked together to, you know, a lot of our neighboring municipalities, a lot. But, you know, some of them canceled their fireworks, and our team knew that it was really important to the community to go ahead and try to fit them in somehow. So city manager and all the team, just the way our entire team worked together to time those just after sunset, but move it up just enough to get them in right before the skies opened and we unleashed the rain. That was really an incredible collaboration by our entire team because I know it's police and fire and parks and rec and everybody working together. And it's just so great to see. And then another way our team makes our city and our citizens look great is, I think everyone's tired of hearing me talk about the Incredible Dog Challenge, but that aired on Sunday on NBC, a national broadcast by NBC Sports. And they made our city look as fantastic as it is with the drone shots and all that. And I credit that partly to the Hollywood production crew that comes in to do it. But I also credit our team, you know, from communications all the way to, you know, our first responders and Parks and Rec and everybody that goes into making that event successful. I know Visit St. Pete Clearwater contributes some grant money to make that happen, but I'd tell you, we get, whatever they contribute, we get our monies back way in return. And particularly in an environment where a lot of folks, even throughout Tampa Bay, but definitely throughout the country, don't realize that we're back from the hurricanes. Our Clearwater Beach is pretty much back the way it was before the hurricanes. So really, successful event to see it air a couple months afterwards. Thank you to our team again for the outstanding job. And addition, Councilmember Cotton, to our fantastic Pinellas County Legislative Delegation, I also want to thank the governor for not vetoing a lot of the appropriations that came our way because those appropriations are really important to us, going to help us significantly keep our mill rate down. And I appreciate all of our legislative delegation, but also the governor, in supporting those important appropriations to make Clearwater, the city of Clearwater, able to better serve its citizens. So with that, if there's no else, nothing else to come before the city council, we will adjourn